We'll schedule a school committee meeting to order. Mr. LaBelle Pierce, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report, I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. School building needs? That's Mr. Stevens again.
For school committee, where are we here? Nothing for school committee resources. We are going to, I'm going to ask to table the resource committee tonight, the what's on here.
Okay.
So we will, and I will have those numbers for you later.
All right.
Which items?
So you're talking, we're also, school building needs?
And not, yes, but nothing on school building needs.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none. Policy committee, Ms. Cregan?
Nothing to report. We'll try to schedule a meeting for June. You had approved policies in the packet of two weeks ago.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. Student support, Mr. LaBelle Pierce?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. School personnel committee, nothing to report at this time. Executive committee, again, nothing to report at this time. And this brings us to the student reports.
All right. So this past Friday, on the 31st, we had all the seniors graduate from Fitchburg High School, which was really great. And now we have all freshmen, they're earlier going to take a biology or technology engineering MCAS. And there's going to be an undergraduate awards ceremony on the 7th, which will be for students who have earned recognition in like their academic and social performances past year. And ending it off in June, around in the week of June 10th, there's going to be the Chromebook collection. So you can see we have our Chromebooks that are provided from the school. So they're all going to be collected, to be taken care of and repaired and stuff.
You know, excuse me, Ethan, one second. I just want to, I want to publicly state, once again, what an outstanding graduation that was. It was even better because I know, over the years that I've been attending the graduation, you know, you never know what the weather's going to be like. It was absolutely perfect Friday night. And we couldn't be happier. And again, my congratulations to the superintendent and his staff, certainly the teaching staff as well, for putting on a terrific event and a great honorable time for these young people to graduate from Fitchburg High School. And what I mentioned to them is to carry forth and always remember where you're from. You'll always have a home here in Fitchburg. So again, congratulations. And Ethan, go ahead.
So coming up, starting the 16th, we'll have 21 students attending a week-long program at Stonehill College. Boys slash girls, St. Mina-Hana will both be attending. It is just a leadership government camp for a week. Like I said, you go to Stonehill, and you had to get a sponsor, and they sponsor you for the whole week. So we have some sports news. The Unified Track Team plays second in the state.
Wow.
So we got one of those Massachusetts trophies, you might have saw it on the Fitchburg Public Schools, that state finalist. And then hopefully next year we can be number one. The girls tennis team has a playoff match against Wachusett. They are number four in their division. So they'll see if they can take home the district championship. And then baseball has a playoff game Thursday against whoever wins in the qualifying match. And baseball also has a very good team, so we will see what happens with that.
Where's that game?
That game, I think it depends on who wins. Because they don't know who their opponent is yet.
Oh, okay.
So I think it depends on who wins the qualifier before. And then, as Alana was saying, we have the Science MCAS coming up, the Underclassmen Awards, and then the Underclassmen final exams will be the 10th through the 14th. Then the last day of school will be June 15th, which is make-up exams. And that's all to report today.
Great. Questions?
I'd just like to compliment the tennis team. Fitchburg tennis has not done that well in so many years. And congratulations to these young people who've done such an outstanding job this year.
Congratulations. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of the previous school committee meeting, May 20th, 2019. We have a motion. Motion? Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of May 20th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, as you may, there's no need, I don't believe there's a need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent. Communications, Ms. Cregan?
A couple of things. I forgot to mention, DPW Day is a week from Wednesday. I can't believe it's DPW Day 11. It will be from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., nicely dovetailing with our final half-day of the year. This is at the yard and behind Crocker Field. We could really use student volunteers, I'm looking at my two students in their room. We can use student volunteers for an hour, a couple of hours, whatever you can do. I'm going to reach out to everyone else as well. We so appreciate the Department of Public Works staff for staying after and volunteering their time to give all the kids of Fitchburg and, you know, this wonderful time exploring the trucks, and the police trucks, and the fire trucks, and the FATV truck. Thank you, FATV. So this is a really exciting one. We also have a two bicycle giveaway. Councilor Caddy has donated two bikes, and we're giving away tickets that kids can win a bike. We also are giving away original copies of an original story called "The Amazing Adventures of C.C. Sewer Cam." Sorry, I don't have a copy here, but we'll be getting it to different classrooms as well. Jeff Morofsky is very interested in having the education world of Fitchburg and the public works world of Fitchburg have a lot to do with one another. So, yeah, I think that's it for DPW Day. Number 11.
Great. Always fun. Come on, bring your families, it's a great day.
And wear play clothes, and it goes on rain or shine. Ethan?
Yes.
Ms. Scott, who's the assistant principal of the Honors Academy, she always posts, we have a Google Classroom for the Honors Academy, and all the Honors Academy kids are looking for community service hours, so you'll get.
Doing it right now.
Kids.
Great. Thank you. Mr. LaBelle Pierce?
Not really a communication, I guess, but good time to bring it up. It was exciting Sunday morning to drop off my eighth grader, and the eighth grade field trip to Washington DC is well underway at this point. And it was, there were four luxury buses that arrived. I mean, that's the biggest group that I've seen in a lot of years. I know Jen Fisher talked about that. But just very exciting, and all the parents were really excited. So I can't wait to hear all the stories, and I know they're posting as they go, but just still thinking about them. And, you know, I have to say, the teachers who organized that, that's impressive. They're really, really, we're lucky to have all of those teachers.
How many years has that been going on now?
Since 1985.
Eighty-five. Yep.
Just amazing undertaking.
Two things I'd like to comment on, to follow up on the report on the Fitchburg High graduation on Friday night. I'd also like to say that the Goodrich Academy graduated on Thursday night at the fieldhouse at the high school. Hundred and forty students graduated, students from 31 cities and towns in the area. It's the first time I've attended that graduation. It's very impressive, and I just want to give a big shout-out to the students who opted to go through and take all the courses to finish their coursework, to get a high school diploma, as opposed to just, not just, but taking a test to get a GED. And it's obvious that there's a good relationship between the students at Goodrich and the faculty who teach there. And just wanted to mention that. And the other thing I'd like to mention, today at Crocker School, at St. Anthony's, formerly known as St. Anthony's, five third-grade classes and four fourth-grade classes participated in what was called Clean Energy Day. Very impressive program. The mayor and I were there this morning. Chad Garner and I stayed a little bit longer, after the mayor had to leave for another meeting. But the teachers at Crocker were able to get a grant. People from the Museum of Science in Boston came to do workshops with the kids. And they had it split up, so in the morning, the third graders left to go up to Mount Wachusett Community College to get a tour of the campus, as well as a tour of the two wind turbines that are there. The fourth graders stayed in the morning at the school, so they were as a group who was with the Museum of Science people. And then two separate classrooms, they had little work projects, working on making windmills out of Lego construction. And each child, I believe, went home with a little tiny windmill turbine kit to bring home. It was very impressive, impressive with the excitement by the students, as well as really excitement by the teachers who were there, working with the kids. And it's just another event that shows what our teachers can do in terms of looking for outside funds to improve the education that our students receive in our schools. I just wanted to mention that, so that...
Did you get me a windmill?
I'm sorry, I didn't get one either. I didn't ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Pierce.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees is an organization that several of the members of the committee are involved in, none the least of which is Mr. Pete Stevens because of his more than 10 years of service as a school committee member. And what we're doing tonight, what I'd like to do is nominate him for lifetime membership in the Mass Association of School Committees. And we require a vote?
Nope, not at all.
No, we don't. All right.
Well deserved.
Well, it's well deserved is right. Thanks, Peter, for all the years of service. For all, what, 150 years of service?
About that. Let the fire off.
I want to make sure you get all the credit you can. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes?
It seems to be our habit. Can I get a good note? Ha. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Superintendent. Happy birthday to you.
All right. How old? Come on.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Or 26 last time, right?
Times two. He says he's glad his birthday's in August. We come to the public comment section of our agenda, five-minute limit. Does anyone wish to make a public comment? Please seat yourself at the center table, identify yourself by name and address. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none. Superintendent's report?
Okay. Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to recognize a few teachers, as it's the end of the school year. It marks the end of journey, not only for the seniors who graduated, but tonight we have three staff members who will be retiring from Fitchburg Public Schools. So as is a custom, every year we give a little gift and token of our appreciation for your time educating students in Fitchburg, and we want to wish you well on your next journey. So we have a few people here tonight, so if you want to just come up and say, I'll give these gifts out to you. So first, Mark?
Thank you. And Abby? And Barbara? Do you want to say anything to the school committee as the last word?
Could you just say your schools too, please?
It's your school, so.
So I've been here five years. I was a principal, I came back, I've enjoyed my five years here, back in the classroom, enjoyed working with the students. Been challenging at times, but also very rewarding, and I'm going to miss it in some ways. I'm not going to miss the hours and the work, but I'm going to miss a lot of the, you know, the relationship with people and with the students. But it's time to do all those things that I've been telling myself I'm going to do when I have time. So now I have time.
That's great.
I'm the occupational therapist who works at Crock, excuse me, works at Crocker right now, so long between Crocker and San Antonio's. And the Crocker staff is wonderful. They're so good at bringing kids from preschoolers, when they're just coming in all scared, until they get up to kindergarten and third and fourth grade, they're wonderful. Working with the kids, I've enjoyed working with all of them.
That's great.
Hi, Barbara Atkinson, I work at McKay-Aid's Academy. I've been teaching for 32 years. I actually started here as a provenance sub and a Title I teacher, and then at McKay, then to South Street, and then back at McKay. And ending my career as a kindergarten teacher, and it's bittersweet, but doing it for 32 years, it's time to, for another chapter, and I love the outdoors. I love to run, walk, hike, anything to do with outdoors, I love doing that. And I do have a father who is 96, and I am a caretaker, and he will be moving into my house when I do retire.
Wow.
And having my Pierce join McKay, it has been a blessing, and it's been very enjoyable. And thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. Thank you.
Thank you. How do you think it's going to feel on like August 29th?
Excited.
Maybe exciting. Congratulations.
Tell the truth, Don.
Congratulations.
So next up, we have the 21st Century Program of South Street here tonight. So I know we have Becky Mackey and Sue Turignan, and we have a whole crew of students here.
We do.
Bite the students off.
Thank you for giving us the time. There's always wonderful things happening at the 21st Century Program. Our showcase is Monday night, if you want to come get a taste of everything that's going on. Tonight, we're going to share with you something that we're extremely, extremely proud of.
Mr. Turignan, next Monday night?
Monday to 10th.
What time?
It's here. I'm sending a flyer around, but it's here. The middle school drama club will be putting on Seussical, which is a short musical, which is great.
Oh, cool.
And then we have, all of the five schools will be here, but they'll have all of their works on display.
Okay.
So all of the things that have taken place during the school year will be showcased on Monday night. So there was a group of student, a group of staff members that attended a professional development workshop in the fall. It was called picture writing. And the topic for this year was called immigration. And we implement, we had a professional development day in December for all 21st Century staff. And then staff members from South Street opted to do this picture-writing workshop for the students. And it was all about immigration. So the kids had the opportunity to tell their story, if they were immigrants, or they could sit with family members and talk about how their families came here. And so as a result of that, they created these beautiful, amazing books. I'm going to let Becky and Kelly share with you the process. Laura Forsman was the teacher, and she's going to also talk to you. But you're going to hear the kids' stories. And again, we're extremely proud of this project-based learning activity that took place. It engaged the students, it engaged the families. It's an amazing, amazing activity. And this Thursday, the district coordinators' meeting is at Devon's, and we've been asked to present at that district coordinators' meeting as well. So it's really an amazing program, but I'm going to let them share with me.
So I'm just going to talk briefly. So this is a image-making immigration unit. So Kelly and I did PD at South Street for our entire staff, and many of them took off with it. Laura works for us in the after-school program. So she worked with these amazing families in the after-school program. And the really neat thing about this whole process was, we as teachers, the kids, I mean, the parents came in and worked with us, came from work, after work, spent hours working with the kids, doing the research. And, I mean, we really connected with some wonderful families. So we have stories from Puerto Rico, we have stories from Laos in the Philippines, and then we have poetry, which I write and will share with you also. But Laura, do you want to briefly talk about the process, and then we'll have the kids read?
So these stories literally came to life, all by just doing hand-painted papers. To start off with, every day, we painted several, and when I say several, it could have been seven to 25 different paintings. We used everything from bubble wrap, you'll see on some of those, to Saran Wrap, taking the watercolors on it, taking plexiglass and squishing the paint, not really knowing what they were going to do with it yet. In between doing that, we were looking up pictures on the internet, as far as finding their home countries, seeing mornings, evenings, sunsets, storms. So they had that visual to go from. So they knew more, they needed more black papers, you'll see some of them in there with the Saran Wrap that was dried on it, it looked like lightning or a stormy sky. Then they created a work board where they had to introduce their country and how they felt about it, giving something positive. Every student had a four-page, oops, one more, there, had a four-page book. So they started off with their home country and feelings, or the storm, or whatever it was, why they were leaving, how they got here, and then America, which proudly, most of them ended up right here in Fitchburg.
And the whole purpose of this was to elicit language. So we wanted to build background, we wanted to work on oral rehearsal, the public speaking piece, to just build background knowledge and have them speak and write and tell their story.
And when you start with the picture, and you're able to manipulate it, your words and vocabulary come through so much easier, and that's what we found.
They shared their vocabulary, which was awesome. We had students brainstorming words, looking at the different skies, how this is relaxing and cooling and peaceful. Well, as we're making up these word walls, the other students are using them too. So it was nice for our students that didn't have full language to get those, and then match it up with the pictures that they've seen. And it's evoking all kinds of emotion as they're writing also. So they were really proud. They had to start off with all their different backgrounds, knowing the different times of day. So they have like the early morning, or late at night. Getting the different transition words for our beginning language learners was interesting. And they ended up working together really well. Whoops, this is just her cover there. Thank you.
Do you want to let him read, and then we'll talk a little bit after?
Yes.
So Aiden came to us, you've been with us now two years, hon? He came to us in first grade with very limited language. So this activity, like, just was mind-blowing for all of us. And for him to, he came into 21st Century really timid and quiet, and here he is tonight, an author and publisher. So we're going to let him share his story. Go ahead, sweetie.
Oh, yep. Okay. You ready, hon?
Changes of My Life by Aiden Tixero-Villas, me. My home country was Puerto Rico. It is an island in the Caribbean. In Puerto Rico, it was very hot, and we liked to go to the beach. The sand was hot, so you had to walk very fast to get to the water sand. Your feet won't get hot. You can find coconuts. We put our things under the trees, because the sand is cooler in the shade. Then everything changed. Hurricane Maria and the storm destroyed my house. All the wood broke, my family was very sad. The storm was noisy, my sister was crying, we had no home. We had to go to my grandma's house. Her house was safe, because it was made out of bricks. A construction company came and collected all the wood to make a new house, but we didn't have enough, have money. My mom came to Massachusetts to find a new home. She cleaned up an old house to make it new for us to live in. Then grandma brought my sister and me to see our new home, like, I liked the ride and didn't like the ride at the same time. The turbulence was fun for me, but my grandma didn't like it. My grandma went back to Puerto Rico. Late at night, we were driving home. We were so sleepy. I liked looking out the window and seeing the moon, the different kinds of plants. I like our house. We have plenty of space. Our floor is a big rug, even upstairs, and our stairs have a rug. We share our backyard with the whole neighborhood, but we do have our own personal space. My house feels safe. I feel happy in Massachusetts.
Is that right? Wow.
He's been here 11 months, in Massachusetts.
Yeah?
Oh, my goodness.
June 11th, he, the 30th, I guess. So proud of him.
You got great teachers, don't you?
And you, did you know English before you came?
You did?
Yeah.
Okay.
You were learning how to write it, and you had some really impressive vocabulary words in there.
Yes, you did.
Like turbulence.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he came in, yeah, as, I think he was a Level 1, and now he's just blossomed, and he's speaking, and writing, and talking, and doing all kinds of wonderful things.
What grade are you in now?
Second.
Third grade next year, right? All right.
Beautiful.
And Pontiff's writing the story from her mom's point of view, because mom helped her.
Okay.
A devastating flood, Laos, by Pontiff Gahal.
Big word.
Early in the morning, the warm wind was blowing. Our bamboo house in the small village stood peaceful. Laos is where I was born. I lived here with my parents and siblings. I was safe, happy, and loved. Late at night, it was still very windy. It was dark and disturbing. The dark night was, got louder and more terrifying. The wind began to blow harder and harder. Soon, it started to rain so hard. The horrible storm ruined homes all around us. The flood ruined so many homes, we had to go to a refugee camp in Thailand. The refugee camp did not feel like home. I miss my friends and my bamboo house. After a while, I was old enough to leave the refugee camp. I wanted to leave my country for a better life. I wanted to be able to work hard, make money, and support my family. On May 5th, 1980, I boarded an airplane...
On May fifth, nineteen eighty, I boarded an airplane and headed to America. Now I am married and have a family. I have four children and two grandchildren that I'm, that I am so proud of. I have a home and a job. We all work very hard. My children are so intelligent. Our favorite thing to do is hanging out with family at Hampton Beach. We take turns going into the cold water with our children. Under the umbrella, the children eat as some of us tan. I left my country for a better life. I am so grateful for all the wonderful opportunities here in America.
Life in America by Malia Um. Early in the morning, my grandfather leaves on his boat. He goes away for a very long time. He catches fish, crabs, and lobsters. He catches his seafood with nets and traps. His job takes him away from his family. He likes his job. He enjoys catching the longer sea animals the best. My grandfather started being a fisherman in Laos. Many years ago, my grandmother lived in Cambodia. There was a Great World War called Khamari War. She saw the soldiers. She was only twelve years old, and she was very scared. She got separated from her sisters and mom and her mom. At only twelve years old, she found a sponsor to go to America. My grandfather, my grandfather's job also took him to America. My grandparents did not travel together, but they did meet in California. Some of my grand, some of my grandmother's mother, family was in Massachusetts, so they moved to Gardner. They started their family. Now I live with my family. My parent, my father was born in California and my mother was born in Gardner. We lived in Pittsburgh. I have visited Cambodia. There are a lot of elephants walking around here in Massachusetts. I love going shopping with all of my friends and family. I enjoy going to the mall and outlets at school. I like doing art, especially with the art teacher, Ms. Obi. Also, the teachers here are great, kind, and loving.
I see shopping is very important to you. I see Macy's there.
So, our next one that we have up is Brighton Wells. And we did poetry for a quicker class. I'm going to pass out some of them. They started off the same way. They did their handmade paintings and then quickly made their collages of their favorite places to visit and to spend time with. There you go.
Thank you.
And one that I'd like to share, and he was really excited to be here, but couldn't make it, is my friend Christopher. And I want to take this one so I can show each one of you. He wrote about Hampton Beach. Standing at the beach, an alligator goes by, my imagination. Now, he had no idea what he was going to do. He likes to go everywhere in Pittsburgh. But everybody who started doing beach pictures, so he started doing beach pictures too. As he was doing it, he noticed his paper had like an alligator from when he did his painting. Because he mixed the blues and the greens to make a more exciting paper and so that the water would look more real. And then he noticed, hey, this is horseman. My water looks like there's an alligator in it. And that changed the entire poem for what he was going to do. At Hampton Beach.
That's awesome.
So I wanted to make sure that I shared that with you, um, as long, as well as the ones there. And we have Brighton Wells here, and he's going to share his too. Go ahead, Brighton.
I love going to the beach, watching electric lights illuminate the sky, being together. Everyone is happy. A family tradition, calm and happy. By Brighton.
Very nice.
He did his as an acrostic poem. Go ahead and show everybody theirs. Also, in all of the books, they have a kapital. Do you want to show yours, honey? Explaining who they are as an author. Telling about themselves at the end of each book.
That's awesome.
This is just one of their personal notes and explaining a little bit about the, the program and how the image evokes so much vocabulary. And the peer interaction that they did when they were working together to help with the vocabulary was an unbelievable social and academic, um, learning experience. It was wonderful. And thank you for listening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, you want to, want to get a picture? Get all the kids, get all the kids together. May I like get a picture?
May I see yours?
And while you guys are organizing, I have some bookmarks for everyone. Be Positive Therapy Pets does the first Saturday of every month at Pittsburgh Library. And it's free, ten-thirty to noon. And if you can share those, we'd love to have you guys bring those stories to read them to the therapy pets.
Oh my gosh.
I know. That would be, and you could-
Would you guys like to do that?
Yeah.
We would, we would love to have you. And you can, you can read to dogs and cats and a rabbit. And they were, this morning, they were in my office reading and they thought maybe starting a culture club, right, Sarah?
Absolutely.
What do you think about that?
Yeah. It's a great idea.
Were you Cambodia, did you say?
So he's the guy to talk to.
Really?
Do you guys want to hold up your pictures? Do you want to hold up your books?
Yep.
All right, what do we got?
Yeah, keep it, yeah.
You got it? You all in? Teachers, all the teachers, where's, wait a minute, you kidding? You're going to be in this.
I know.
I need to take a good picture for the presentation that we're doing.
You suggesting Mr. Thompson's not going to take a good picture? He's talking about you, he's talking about you, Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Nice, thank you.
Well done.
Sue, could I just, like, for you kids and for your parents, I mean, in some cases, it was really scary stuff that brought you here to Massachusetts and to Pittsburgh. But boy, are we lucky that you're here. I mean, you are such a blessing for this city to be able to have. And I hope you share your stories with your classmates because they need to hear those stories too. And just, thank you.
And thank you to the parents for-
Yeah. Yeah.
The connection with the parents that really makes us do it.
We had, one day, the parents came in and everybody made a page for the books to help out. It was very interesting.
That's great.
I love the poems that they all did.
Didn't they do a wonderful job?
Yeah.
So the fir, the, we have three sessions through the Twenty-First Century. And the second session is when the students did the books. But they were very involved in time. I think Laura's still binding some of the other ones from the second session. So chose to switch to poetry for the third session because sometimes it's a little bit shorter of a session. But just the, the writing process, the, you know, if you ask them some of their favorite parts about making their books, it was making the paper.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's an amazing, um, activity. And we do it in the Twenty-First Century program, but we're hoping to bring it district-wide into classrooms now.
That would be great.
So, um, I know that at Crocker, um, one of the teachers there just, and you'll see it at the showcase, but she did Lego writing. So the kids had to build Legos and then they wrote stories based on what they built. So it's kind of the same thing, but now they're using their imagination to, with Legos, but they brought the Legos to life, which is really interesting too. And there's a lot of ways of getting a lot of writing and reading and kids telling stories.
You know, even that whole new social studies curriculum, I mean, to be able to have students be able to share their experience of their families' experiences and just understand how people live and, and what makes people move, right, and why people immigrate. And I think that that presents a whole opportunity for incredible sharing that is really just beautiful, I think, to-
We thought the main theme running through it was empathy.
Yeah.
And that was huge.
Yeah.
In terms of the poems, they're not very long, but it really captures a lot of feelings.
Yes, they were, they're all different ones too.
I know, and it, but it really, I mean, you get a, I don't know, it's very uplifting. I just, I don't know, it really is. I'm, I'm very impressed.
Coffee table book.
I was going to say, I was thinking to put these all together, that'd be very cool. It really would, yes.
I just want to make a comment to all of the readers. So, I am so impressed hearing your stories. Hearing your true stories, the stories of your families. I, I write books myself, so I work for newspapers and write books. And I can tell you that that is work that will make you very happy in your life. And I could tell from reading that you all enjoyed reading to us. Is, is that right? Is that accurate? Because I saw smiles when you were reading, or was it nerve-wracking? Well, here's the thing. Even if you had butterflies, it did not show. You guys have real confidence as authors and your control of the language, your choice of words, there, you know, there, your emotions coming through, but also the detail is really, really impressive. And please keep writing and, and please keep sharing your writing with your friends in your classrooms because you will influence them. They will want to write because of the good writing you're doing, so well done.
Yes.
I think also you gave us a civics lesson tonight too in terms of what makes this country great and this country is a country of immigrants and as a son of two immigrants. You know, maybe someday you can be over here and you can give, you can talk about this book, this budget book in a few years. But I think it's just, and thank you, Mom, because everyone has a story and they remember the dates that they left their country or the, the day that they arrived and, and why they came. And they came, a lot of people came here for a better life, so.
Oral history, very important. Yep.
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
Thank you.
Good job, teachers.
Thank you.
Well, how do you, how do you like working with the big kids?
I can't tell you.
She's not here, right?
Which one?
The top one.
No, she's not.
Yeah, yeah. Tell her she's going to have a new roof on the bathhouse and new floors.
She will wipe that off.
Yep.
There's some down here?
This summer, well, shortly.
No, I think that's, I think that's it.
I gave them to Sue.
The bathhouse. The roof and we're doing all new, like, terrazzo floors in the, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Dave, your, your, your challenge now is to have as compelling a story as, as the students.
And about, David, tough to follow, tough act to follow.
Done, you should have brought those little packets of those cinnamon cookies.
The little one-hundred percent fruit gummies we have, they're made with applesauce. Those are, those are fantastic. Those are delicious, so. Thanks for having us. We just wanted to do a quick nutrition services update for the committee. There's been some faces that have changed in the last year or so, so we'll get right to it. Again, myself, you all know me, I'm David Semenza. I was the food operations manager here with the previous director Jill. She has since moved on. I was promoted to her position last August. I've been with Sedexo, your food service provider, since nineteen ninety-eight and have had the pleasure of being here in Pittsburgh in various roles since two thousand and five. I'd like to introduce you all to Danielle Chason. Danielle is our new food service manager, for lack of a better description. She took over my prior position. Danielle's been with Sedexo for three years. Brings a very strong culinary background, which you'll see in a moment, and very strong food safety background, physical safety background to us. And our dietitian Nicole Mangatis could not be with us here tonight. She's been with Sedexo for just over a year. She's a former Pittsburgh Schools Framingham State intern. More on that in a moment. Couple of quick program updates. School lunch, eighty-five point six percent of students that come to school each day are eating a school lunch here in the Pittsburgh Schools. Forty-six point eight percent of schools that, of kids that come to school each day eat breakfast. That's a number we want to look at. Our goal is to not force kids to eat breakfast. Our goal is to make sure kids and parents and families are educated on the fact that breakfast is free here in Pittsburgh. And then make sure we're doing the best job we can to make sure students have easy access to get a breakfast each day. We have after-school snack programs at Memorial, Long Show, Crocker, McKay, Reingold, and South Street. We offer dinner programs at Pittsburgh High School, Memorial, Long Show, Crocker, Reingold, South Street, and Boys and Girls Club. This summer, we are anticipating up to twenty open feeding sites as part of the summer food service program in Lunen, in Pittsburgh, mostly in Pittsburgh. But Lunenburg, Lemonster, and Clinton as well. Anyone eighteen or under, eat free. We also received a little over six thousand dollars in grant monies to support outreach and new equipment for this coming summer. Just a couple, another program update. All of our elementary school kitchens and serving areas have been made over. We finished the last one here at South, at, over at South Street in, during April break. We've switched to the clubhouse theme. There's Danielle and Nicole up on the ladder hanging signs and whatnot. Pittsburgh High this summer, the kitchen and serving areas there are going to get a remake to our Taste Four theme. More on that to come at a future meeting. And then at, we're anticipating twenty-twenty to do a kitchen and serving area makeover at the middle schools theme and whatnot, still to be determined on that. Some school and community things we're doing. We had our, our annual Future Chef contest this year. It's one of the highlights of our year. It's an annual cooking contest. Students in elementary age submit recipes, prepare them at our Future Chef event that we hold in March. This year's local winner was one of the country semi-finalists. Made it almost to the end. Her tortilla soup was-
Yeah, that was, that was crazy good. All of them.
Great recipes in general.
They get better every year.
Better every year. So creative.
Knocking it out of the pack was great.
We started a program this year, which I cannot take credit for. Danielle and our dietitian Nicole, they developed a Goodrich Academy Cooking and Nutrition Education Program. Once a month, they would head over there to do a hands-on cooking class demonstration and with a, some nutrition education aspect about it. The thought behind it was a lot of these kids are, you know, they're, they're cooking for themselves and, or providing their own meals. And we wanted to show them, A, it's not difficult to eat healthy and it's, you know, it can be, it's a heck of a lot cheaper too than maybe stopping at McDonald's and things like that. So Danielle and Nicole did an outstanding job once a month, and we hope to continue that next year at Goodrich.
Is that just a voluntary thing, like kids could come to it? Or was it just a push into a class or?
They came voluntary, yeah. We would let them know, it was kind of, they told us what they wanted to learn and then we put recipes together that were healthier for them and then brought it to them.
Several of our staff members, myself included, do after-school cooking classes at the, at different schools. I'm here every Wednesday at Memorial doing after-school cooking classes as part of the Twenty-First Century. But several of our other staff members as part of Twenty-First Century program provide cooking classes during those programs. And Framingham State, I had mentioned that earlier. Pittsburgh Schools partners with Framingham State's Dietetic Intern Program. For the last four years, Pittsburgh Schools, we do play a role, our community, in developing industry dietitians as a host locations for students enrolled in that program. So pictured, in that picture on the right is Sam Moreno. She was our intern this year. She's working with some students there. We did some cooking demos with the Project Healthcare students. And our current dietitian, Nicole Mangatis, was an intern four years ago for us. And she graduated, became a registered dietitian, worked at a hospital for a while. We had an opening when our prior dietitian left and she came back and is now our full-time dietitian.
Great.
Just goes to show this, you know, for, for folks in programs like that, the, the networking and- the networking and bridge-building that you do just by doing it. So she's been a great addition.
So Samantha Monero is a student at Fitchburg High?
She is, yes. Samantha is a student at Framingham State University.
Oh, at Framingham State, okay.
I do the same thing with the FSU's. They have a dietitian program where students, you know, studying to be registered dietitians.
And do Fitchburg High School students partake in the program? Or is it just, I guess I'm, I don't really understand the program.
Oh, sure, no, so the interns work in our department and aid us in, you know, whichever, you know, working with the schools.
Okay.
Work onsite, you know, learning, they call this rotation as part of...
Okay, all right.
As part of their training to become a dietitian. And one of the things they have to do is work with students. So they work with the Project Healthcare students.
Great.
Samantha, Sam, worked with Project Healthcare students up at Fitchburg High, doing some cooking demos and cooking classes with them. We work with Worcester Regional Food Hub and it's, Worcester Regional Food Hub is out of Worcester, and they connect farmers to markets. They work directly with farmers in Massachusetts. And Sedexo and Fitchburg Schools has a partnership with them where we essentially can buy locally sourced, they put the infrastructure in place to buy locally sourced produce. So we do buy quite a bit of items through Worcester County Food Hub from Carlson Orchards, Ward's Hill Berry Farms, and things like that. We advertise that, so, you know, just to do as much locally sourced produce as we can on our menus. Quick update on our CEP, Community Eligibility Program. That is the program, the USDA program, that allows us to provide meals at no charge to students. We are currently approved through June, end of June, 2022. So that will, that is in place for, until then, and our goal is to make sure we continue that beyond those years. We are constantly reviewing the data and we can apply each and every year that we would like if we meet the eligibility and we can tack years on beyond that. So right now, we are, we're slotted in for another three years with more hopefully beyond that. And just some things coming up, we continue to look at and upgrade equipment and kitchens as we need to, keeping environmental impact in mind with that. We're making some improvements to our current menu application, our menu app. We're gonna be upgrading a lot of our point-of-sale hardware over the next year. We have this wonderful digital signage at Fitchburg High School that we put in that's being underutilized. We're gonna begin utilizing that. We're gonna be working with school building maintenance to get water bottle filling stations in the cafeterias. You know, the days of the bubblers are sort of going away and to have, you know, provide bottles where students can, you know, students can bring a bottle and fill up a water bottle to take with them. And lastly, we're in the very preliminary stages of this, of looking at the feasibility of installing a freight farm. A freight farm is a container where we grow lettuce. Where, again, very early stages, we've got a lot of, lot of planning to do for it and determining if it will work, but we are committed, if we are able to do it, to install a freight farm here in Fitchburg Schools where we would be growing lettuce for our school.
And using our own lettuce.
Using our own lettuce.
Where would you be doing this?
Pardon?
Where would you be doing this?
Well, it's, like, the location of the freight farm?
Yeah.
We're not sure yet. We're still early on. You know, depending on the Crocker project goes, that's certainly a possibility.
But it's like a container.
It's a, it's a car, yep.
Like a hydroponic or like a...
No, it's not, yep.
Growing soil and all that.
Photo's right from their website.
Growing in soil and all.
It's, it's, it's growing, they're vertical gardens inside this farm, yep. There are a few other Sedexo-managed school districts in Rhode Island that currently have them. We've been, we toured them earlier in May, just to sort of start getting our ducks in a row to see.
That'd be cool to do at the high school and then you could have science classes and that, right?
Exactly, exactly. So again, preliminary, but just wanted to show you some of the exciting things we're looking at, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
David, thanks. Dave, good job. How many minutes was that? Way to go, Dave, I love you.
David, where's the fresh fish? We still doing that?
Yes, fresh fish is still on Fridays at Fitchburg High School.
Every other.
Every other, yep, thank you. Every other Fridays at Fitchburg High School, a company called Red's Best we partner with, that fish is caught on Monday, delivered on Thursday and served, I'm sorry, delivered Tuesday, served on Friday.
Yeah, that's right.
Is it popular?
They're going okay, or what?
It goes okay. Students that like it, really like it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's...
I mean, it's tough for kids. Fish is not a kid thing, right?
It's tough.
It's tough, but again...
And we try different recipes, like the oak rotten and having like cheese associated with it and things like that.
Right, right.
What about the fish tacos? Have you tried some?
Ooh, fish tacos.
We've looked into different fish tacos, there might be something coming down the pipe on that soon.
Okay, great. I gotta get up there to lunch more.
Just what I'm saying, a lot of times I listen to the column show, Boston Public Radio and WGBH, and every so often they talk about school lunches in different towns and cities in the Boston area and whether or not kids should pay, or they talked about shaming. And every time I hear it, I'm in my kitchen or wherever, I say, everybody in Fitchburg gets food and they don't have to pay for it. And I, you don't have the opportunity to call them, but I'm, when I hear that, I think I'm really proud of what you and the school district do for our kids.
I mean, it's such a valuable resource to the families to be able to maintain the community eligibility provision.
Now, is that year four or five now, Dave?
Pardon?
Year four or five with the CEP?
I think we're in year four right now.
David?
Four, yeah, I believe it's four.
David, the breakfast program only at 46, 47%, are we bringing it into the classrooms at all right now?
We are not bringing it into the classrooms. You know, there's a lot of debate on that. What we do do at several schools, and we're looking at doing it more next year, is grab-and-go kiosks to make it as convenient as possible for students to be able to get a breakfast. Breakfast is one of those odd ones, too, because, you know, for elementary schools, for example, elementary kids tend to be up early, but they don't start school till 8:30, 9 o'clock. So there's a, there's a gap there at home where they might eat at home. And the last thing we want to do is force-feed kids breakfast who may not, who may not want it because they already ate, because that can open up a whole other...
One of the things I did at Reingold years ago, we had them in the wagons that we brought in and it was up to the teacher, they could do it between like 8 and 9:30, when it was a good break time for the teacher to let them have their morning breakfast snack. And it was up to the teacher when it was good for them and for the kids, too.
It's tricky, though, because I remember when you started this program and I had a young, you know, my daughter was much younger and my youngest daughter, and she was eating two breakfasts. And I was not happy to find that out because she had breakfast at home. And then, and then she said, "Well, yeah, but everybody has to eat breakfast." And I said, "No, no, you don't have to eat breakfast." So I think it's, it's a tricky thing.
It is.
And, and, you know, a lot of parents like to make sure that they know what their kids are eating and, and so it's just, I think whatever you do, it would, communication, communication, communication. Like, and little kids, they don't really understand sometimes, but...
So, I mean, our, our goal is to make it as easy, easy for the students that want and/or need a breakfast to be able to get.
Right, right.
Without forcing kids who may not want a breakfast or doesn't necessarily need one to not take one. So, and it's about communication.
And I had another question. So when you're at the late lunch at, like, the high school, and is that, that's, how many, how many schools have, like, staggered lunches, like, all of them, like?
Yeah, they all have some form of staggered lunch. Most schools are serving their whole student body within an hour and a half period.
Yeah.
From, you know, 11-ish to 12:30-ish, some are a little later, some are a little bit earlier.
Do you find that when you're studying the amount of food left or whatever, that, like, most kids at that last lunch at the high school have decent choice? Or what they can eat?
Yes, all, the students, the first student at the first lunch should be having the same options to choose from as the last student at the last lunch.
Does that ever not work out?
I mean, it, it could, there could be occasions with a, you know, we, if we tried a new menu item out that we weren't exactly sure, that maybe was more popular than we anticipated. But we, we keep production records for years.
Yeah.
You know, history, you know, we track everything from, you know, weather, what it was up against, were there field trips that day? And do our best, because we don't also, we're not in the business, we don't want to waste food either.
Right, right.
We don't want to be throwing food away. So, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say it never happens, but it, we, it's, it's very infrequent that a student would not have the same op, the last student at the last lunch wouldn't have the same option or choices as the first student from the first lunch.
So, just one housekeeping note, you'll see Dave and Danielle around for another five years as the city just renewed its contract with Sedexo, so.
Thank you, great. Happy to be here. It's been a pleasure the last 14 years. I'm looking forward to several more.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, do you want to...
I would like to recommend Mr. Robert Jokla as the Flack Board member.
Second. Do we need to vote on this? We do, don't we?
Well, these are, these are action items, but I didn't know if you wanted to handle both the collaborative discussion piece.
I'd like to make a nomination that Mr. Stevens continue his wonderful work as our CAPS collaborative member, and he has saved, oh, he is, you've got to explain it. You've kept...
You've kept the budget.
We have not had a, we've had a 0% increase from the Flack Collaborative, from the CAPS Collaborative for the last three years. So that, that's a challenge out front of Mr. Jokla over there to get the Flack to keep their... So CAPS has not had a, an increase to its member districts in the last three years. We've kept it at 0%. We have grown from, in the last eight years, from roughly 70 students to, we've had a high of 144. We're about 138 right now. So we've been continuing to grow and, which helps us to maintain our no increases.
And is the trend kind of an increase of the students at CAPS? Has that been, is it an upward trend or is it...
It's an up, it's an upward trend. And about half of our students are from Fitchburg. We have 11 district cities and towns in the CAPS district and we take in students from throughout the state. There's probably another 30 cities and towns that we take students from and even some from southern New Hampshire.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a, it's important. And when you think back, that Fitchburg State was one of the, you know, founding schools going into special ed anywhere, and the work continues. So I'm not seeing on our action items, or am I missing it? Oh, no, we are, we have it on action item. So when we get there, I'll make the nomination as well.
Okay.
Okay, and then the school choice 2019-2020 vote. Mr. Stevens mentioned earlier that action items, numbers 1168 up to and including 1180 will be tabled and that we'll be having a resource subcommittee sometime over the next two weeks, just to review those prior to coming back two weeks from now.
Could you just say that again? What's being tabled?
The, so tonight, the school committee is voting on, number one, the city budget, which is a $60,225,000. And in each year, we have individual votes for each line item of school choice spending for next year. So Mr. Stevens asked if I table the individual school choice line items until we've, the resource subcommittee has had a chance to review those.
Okay.
And if everything works out fine, we'd come back two weeks from now seeking full school committee approval.
Okay, thanks.
Donations, Mr. Jokla?
Okay, donations, we have two tonight. One is for books with a value of about $1,650. Actually, it's a combination of $774 in check and the remaining balance in book values from a fundraiser at the Fay Club. And second, we have another donation from Lynn Cassinari Finlayson for some T-shirts with the Red Raiders logo, about 49 T-shirts with a value of $245. Then, on a good news, the George R. Wallace Foundation, the Fitchburg Education Foundation applied for a grant for $17,500 for the new marching band uniforms and the George R. Wallace Foundation approved those. So...
That's super.
They'll be paying the foundation, July 31st is the target date. So the band parents can go out and get the uniforms they deserve while they're, when they go to Florida, so.
Great, nice.
So then, the, tonight is the final reading of the budget and as I've done with Superintendent Ravinal in the past, the last night is the distribution of the, of the book. We sent out a link to all of you Friday afternoon. The only item that was not included was the original first reading PowerPoint presentation that is included, so that'll be scanned and we'll send you a new link tomorrow. So in the meantime, I just printed out a hard copy of the May 6th PowerPoint presentation for your, for your reference. In summary, there were no changes to that presentation. You know, the, the budget book is a little bit different in format this year where we didn't have individual summaries for each school. Instead, we had more of a district-level summary as we have several schools in an accountability status. So we decided to have a more comprehensive just narrative. And there, I think, about 15 bullet points in there. And I think, you know, some of the themes for next year are really going to be, you know, collaboration and innovation as we move forward. And in a couple of weeks, we should find out from DESI if the Memorial School redesign grant, if we are approved for that. Right, Paula?
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if... Yeah, middle of June. So I know there was, you know, I think the PDF that was sent out Friday afternoon was about 140-something pages. Again, it's a lot of detail, really a lot of information, you know, a lot of graphs, tables, really to give you a snapshot of where we're at. So whether, you know, it's capital items. I know one of the things that we've spoken about at other meetings, last year's original budget, that line item was $50,000. This year, it's $600,000 in the budget book. And actually, in the presentation that I made back at the beginning of May, it itemized those initiatives. We also go over, you know, each school, where they're at in terms of the accountability, the subgroups that we're gonna be focusing on, summarize the, the changes so far in terms of the new position added at central office and the 12 other positions that we're adding throughout the district to meet, whether it be enrollment needs and/or civics requirements at our schools. So that's kind of a high-level summary. And Paula, if there's anything else that you can think of to add?
You know, I want to, I want to say that, and I highlighted in the book, the capital upgrades. I can't stress enough how we've had quite a challenging year with, with capital issues with buildings because we have, some of our schools are aging and are at advanced years. And that's, that's an outstanding commitment, not just from the city. Obviously, the city, we appropriated $400,000, but, you know, schools have their skin in the game as well on that additional $200,000, significantly beyond what we've ever done in the past. I mean, we had a $50,000 capital line item, and that's absolutely nothing.
And I think, you know...
So this is, this is really important. Can't underscore how, how important this is gonna be for the coming year.
And I think one of the things, whether it's the capital or the positions that we're able to add, frankly, to meet the enrollment bulge as it moves into our middle school. Overall, our enrollment is flat year over year. But without the governor's proposed budget, where he adopts several of the foundation budget review commission's recommendations.
Yeah.
We'd be in a totally different scenario. We'd be looking at a $2 million deficit. So the governor's budget, and it's, you know, working its way through the House and Senate and the conference committees, and what'll be finalized, I don't know. And one of the goals this year was to have a new education funding bill. I can't say...
Foundation.
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, to put it, you know, to codify it.
Long way to do.
I'm not, I agree, I'm not sure if that'll happen before the, the budget or as part of the state's budget conversations, or if it'll happen next year. But clearly, for, for Fitchburg, for the needs of our students, you know, the ELL population, you know, the increasing special education costs, the cost... know, the increasing special education costs, the costs of health insurance, and again, our capital needs are also, we're, you know, we're trying to take a, a bite at the apple in a lot of different places here.
Well done.
Can you just, and I'm sorry, I know I wasn't here for the last reading, but the, the psychologist line items, so those are, so what, how many psychologists are working in each of the schools, and how are they budget, they're budgeted in their respect, respective schools, is that right?
Only in some cases.
Yeah.
So, if I might, in some cases, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, and/or social workers, as they've left the school, a choice the principals have made with, in collaboration with the Director of Special Ed and Pupil Services, has been to hire a school psychologist. Similar changes have happened with guidance counselors, whereas those folks have retired or left, we've hired adjustment counselors, because the social, emotional, and behavioral health needs are more clinically, might be more clinically oriented, so the expertise of having someone with a deeper clinical experience at the school is important, so in some cases, school psychologists are housed at the school, because they're in a spot that was a social worker, or an adjustment counselor. In some cases, the school psychologists work out of central office, and do the special ed testing, so it's, there's, they may show up as, with their cost center being at a school, or they may have a cost center at central office through the special ed department, it's a combination.
And there was one, on the special education budget, there's one listed where in 2019 there was a zero budgeted item, but in 2020, they requested is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, but it says psychologist hyphen Rhinegold, so I was just curious about that, like, what that's-
Some of it is just like a reclassification, or truing up to where they actually are, because people are moving, and their designations change.
But they may, in large part, service the, the self-contained students at, Rhinegold has two classrooms of students that are district-wide programs.
So is that a new position, then?
I know, I don't think it's new, but they've had to add a school psychologist, well, I think they've been working short, and we, they've been contracting out with someone, so the goal is to hire, like, a permanent person, that can actually facilitate behavior plans, assessments, that kind of thing.
Could I please request that we get some communication about, like, which, how many psychologists we have, what schools they're assigned to, whether they're contracted, right?
They have that track.
Because I think we haven't really heard that much this year, and I, I know that when we were talking strategically about where you get your best results, it was with psychologists, it was with school adjustment counselors, it was, you know, more erring on that side than adding maybe additional paraprofessionals, but, but I really feel like, I'd like to see that.
Sure, yeah, we can get that for you.
Thanks.
Can I, I just, I just wanted to be, um, Jean, I'm, I'm in Rhinegold every Monday with the Therapy Pet Program, and I can tell you that the school psychologist has, has really made a significant difference, and a very positive impact, on a very challenging population that is very unpredictable, so.
But is it one, like, I seem to remember that somebody had to split their time, they were sometimes at Rhinegold, they were sometimes somewhere else, I guess I just, I need to, I'd like to hear what the routine is, like, and are they there every day, and are they, you know, that's what I'd like to know.
Yeah.
I, I agree, it's the right way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it? Do we want to bundle the action items?
We should start with the, we should keep eleven sixty-one, eleven sixty-two, we should do separately, but we can bundle, I think, after-
Sixty-three up through and including, okay, so we need to appoint Superintendent Jokla to serve as representative, that's nineteen dash eleven sixty-one, serve as a representative to the FLAC Board of Directors for 2019-2020.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous. Nineteen dash eleven sixty-two, approve the school committee's recommendation to nominate, will we nominate? Peter? Pete Stevens to serve as school committee representative to CAPS Collaborative for 2019-2020.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
I think now we're going to go so-
Nineteen dash eleven sixty-three, up to and including-
Eleven sixty-eight.
Nineteen dash eleven-
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Yep. Sixty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, sixty-seven, yeah.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous.
Make a motion to table eleven sixty-eight through eleven eighty.
Second.
Eleven eighty, all right, motion made, second to table eleven sixty, what is it?
Eleven sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight through eleven eighty. Through eleven eighty, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Nineteen dash eleven eighty-one, accept a warrant.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
No need for executive session.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made, a second to adjourn, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, for contributing towards-